Good evening. Welcome to the Yukon City Council Yukon Municipal Authority Meeting. It is June the 3rd approximately 7:00 PM. We are gathered here in council chambers in the Centennial Building at 12 South Fifth Street in the great city of Yukon, Oklahoma. At this time, we'll have our invocation delivered by Mike Jones of Town and Country Christian Church, followed by our flag salute. Please rise as you're able.
Dear God, we thank you for another time to gather as citizens of Yukon and look out for what's best for the community as a whole. We see the words on the wall that say, "We trust you." In 1 Peter, Chapter 5, Verse 7, we're reminded to cast our anxieties and cares on you. So I pray, Lord, as we move forward tonight, that the members involved with making decisions continue to move forward with wisdom, seeing things from your perspective and with humility as we work together, just like we saw the cold and the heat mix tonight to produce a tornado warning for us, which was adventurous. We know sometimes different temperaments and different passions can produce a storm, but we trust you. We trust you that we will work these things out, and we will do things for your glory. And I thank you and praise you for the work you're doing here in Yukon. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Brian Pillmore.
Here.
Jeff Wooten. Shelley Selby.
Here.
Adam Schreiber.
Here.
Ronnies Zimmerman.
Here.
At this time, we'll consider a motion for the City Council to elect a mayor from its membership pursuant to Article 2, Section 5 of the Yukon City Charter. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
What, what member would be nominated? Councilmember Schreiber.
I'd like to nominate Brian Pillmore.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, seeing no more discussion, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore.
Yes.
Selby.
No.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a motion for the City Council to elect a vice mayor from its membership pursuant to Article 2, Section 5 of the City Charter. Do I hear a motion? I nominate Jeff Wooten to serve as Vice Mayor of the City of Yukon to act in the capacity of mayor when required as outlined in the charter. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore.
Yes.
Selby.
No.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
At this time, we'll have our visitors section of our agenda. Anyone having an item of business to present to the City Council that does not appear on the agenda, please come to the podium at this time, state your name and address. You're requested to limit your presentation to three minutes. Any item being presented must pertain to City of Yukon business. Madam Clerk, do we have any visitors that have signed up to speak? Oh, Mr. Burris. Go ahead. Please state your name and your address.
Mike Burris, 300 East Platte Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Burris.
Thank you.
Councilperson Selby has chosen to make her disagreement with me personal rather than an issue-driven disagreement over a matter of public concern. I'm requesting a formal investigation by the City of Yukon into her online posts. I've provided a copy of the comments Mrs. Selby posted on the internet, or excuse me, published on the internet. Those copies include comments of the supporters she incited. Ms. Selby's posts are harassment, cyber trolling, and cyber bullying. Ms. Selby's posts are a violation of Yukon Personnel Manual and the Best Practices Handbook for Oklahoma municipalities created and produced by municipal consultants and the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group. Ms. Selby's online posts violate other rules, policies, and laws not listed here. An investigation would allow me and other citizens to understand the scope of her violations. The issue that remains unanswered is whether OML and NLC and the Chamber of Commerce could be enlisted to assist citizens of Yukon with the amphitheater problem they're facing. That question should still be answered because Yukon citizens are members and pay substantial sums to those organizations. Ms. Selby's posts illustrate while citizens of Yukon are facing matters that will negatively impact a citizen's quality of life, the quality of life of their families, their ability to enjoy peace and quiet in their homes, and loss of property values. Ms. Selby is concerned with other issues. I have a neighbor that sent a kid to University of Oklahoma last school year. We could send four councilpersons to OU full-time for less than we pay OML, NLC, and the Chamber of Commerce for one year. Hopefully, we can discuss the issue of bank for your buck before the budget is finalized. The OML, NLC, and the Chamber could help residents rather than businesses alone. In closing, I hereby request an investigation into Councilperson Selby's online harassment, cyber trolling, and cyber bullying. I am requesting appropriate discipline based on Yukon's Personnel Manual and the O-M-A-G Handbook. Please have the appropriate authority. Let me know if paperwork needs to be completed regarding the investigation. I don't think the council's allowed to ask me any questions under the visitors section.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Burris. We appreciate your comments. At this time, we'll take any other members. I do have a few that have signed up if they'd like to speak at this time or speak on any other agenda item. Thank you, sir.
Stephanie Burdine, 515 Maple. I think what I want to talk about is going to be addressed in G on Consent Docket. Does that deal with?
We will allow for comment on Consent Docket. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
If you'd like to speak on Consent Docket.
Does that include what was posted on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The Consent Docket.
Okay, then I'll save my comment for then.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Burdine.
Thank you. Will we be able to have comments on the budget as well?
Yes, ma'am. Yep, it's a properly-agendaed item. Okay, seeing no other visitors, we'll close this visitors' section. At this time, we'll recess as Yukon City Council, reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. We'll take up the Yukon Municipal Authority Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The City Manager recommends a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 20th, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a motion to approve Resolution Number YMA-2025-01, a resolution approving the Yukon Municipal Authority Oklahoma Budget for the fiscal year 2025-2026, establishing budget amendment authority and allowing for amendments to the proposed budget during the meeting as necessary. Do I hear a motion? I'll move on that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? And again, this is for the YMA budget, so it will be limited to activities of Yukon Municipal Authority. Go ahead, Ms. McAllister.
Amy McAllister, 14175 West Highway 66. As I reviewed the proposed fiscal year 2025-26 budget that was posted with the minutes, I noticed a substantial change in Section 2 when compared to last year's budget. So I'd like to read these paragraphs. So the people listening or those that maybe haven't had a chance to read through it, they'll know what I'm talking about. So in the proposed budget for this upcoming fiscal year, paragraph, Section 2 paragraph reads, "The Yukon Municipal Authority does hereby authorize the Authority Finance Director, with the manager's approval, to transfer any unexpended or unencumbered appropriations at any time throughout fiscal year 2025-2026, from one line item to another, when object category to another within the same department, or from one department to another within a fund. Without further approval by the Yukon Municipal Authority, all other budget amendments must be approved by the Yukon Municipal Authority." So in comparison, that same section in the current budget year, fiscal year 2425, it was approved by all five of you on June 4th, 2024, and I'll read it to you.
Yeah, Ms. McAllister, can I just add one point there? You're correct. It's the one that we rewrote last year to not allow for transfers between funds and departments.
Right, I'd like to read it so people can hear.
Yeah, go ahead.
The Yukon Municipal Authority does hereby mandate that account-to-account transfers within a department budget series, and then in parentheses, 100 Series Personal Services, 200 Series Materials and Supplies, 300 Series Services and Charges, 400 Series Capital Improvement, 500 Series Debt Services, will be allowed at the management approval, at the city management approval level. All other transfers from one entity to another, one fund to another, one department to another, and one series to another must have explicit prior written approval of the City Council for the fiscal year 2425 budget. Transfers between funds are expressly prohibited and will require a budget amendment. All other budget amendments must be approved by the City Council. So as noted in the executive summary of the forensic audit that was dated January 13th of 2025, there were, in my opinion, two statements that kind of applies to this situation. First off, a key finding example was significant anomalies in budgeting and fund transfers, including unauthorized funds transfers and inappropriately filed budget amendments with Oklahoma State Auditor. The second is a summary paragraph that states, "These findings reflect a pervasive breakdown of accountability, governance, and oversight with many issues exacerbated by the failure of past management to address red flags and act decisively. The city's history of poor documentation, inadequate policies, and resistance to oversight has compounded risk to public trust and financial integrity." So with those thoughts in mind, we clearly can hear the differences of these two paragraphs. So could you please provide some insight on why we think it's appropriate now to loosen
I'll do, I'll do one better than providing insight.
Okay.
Because the paragraph from last year should have come over to this year's budget, that's Section 2.
Okay.
And that was clearly an oversight. I didn't prepare that document. I did prepare last year's document.
Okay.
And that language. So I currently have the motion. I will amend my motion to completely substitute Section 2 of this year's YMA budget amendment to be inclusive of last year's language for the budget amendment, which prohibits those transfers. And we operated under that very successfully as a council and with our city manager. So I make that, I make that motion, I amend my motion now. Do I hear a second for that amended motion?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McAllister, for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you for bringing that up. I was going to do the same, but it sounded better coming from me. Thank you.
Any other comments on the YMA budget, which deals a lot with water, sewer, the enterprise functions of the city, sanitation, the fun stuff? Right. Seeing, oh, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Castle.
Okay, Zach Castle, 728 Vill Avenue. Just for clarification, your amended motion replaces the text of Section 2 from last year's into the text of this year's.
That's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make that.
A wholesale replacement.
Okay.
The identical language.
Good, thank you.
Except for the year.
Except for the year, yeah. Yeah, don't mess up the year, please. Then we'd have to come back with a Scrivener's error. All right. Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore.
Yes.
Selby.
No.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Okay. At this time, we'll recess as Yukon Municipal Authority, reconvene as Yukon City Council. Similarly, we'll take up the Yukon City Council Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The City Manager recommends a motion that will approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 20th, 2025, payment of material claims in the amount of $770,119.35. The annual maintenance renewal for 28 Tyler Technologies in-code software modules in the amount of $103,393.16 to be paid to Tyler Technologies, Inc., from the Technology and Utility Billing 2025-2026 budgets, as recommended by the Information Technology Director. The renewal of existing interlocal government cooperation agreement with the City of Bethany, providing the use of the Yukon Jail for the term of July 1, 25 through June 30, 26, at a rate of $42 per day per prisoner. The renewal of the existing interlocal government cooperation agreement with the City of The Village, providing use of the Yukon Jail for the term of July 1, 25 through June 30, 26, at a rate of $42 per day per prisoner. The renewal of the existing interlocal governmental cooperation agreement with the Canadian County Sheriff's Office, providing use of the county jail for the term July 1, 25 through June 30, 26, at a rate of $57 per day per prisoner. Enactment of a temporary moratorium on the enforcement of Chapter 82 of the City of Yukon Code of Ordinances dealing with peddlers and solicitors. The Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Permit to construct a public sewer line for River Mesa, Section 4, from Crafton Tull on behalf of Manco Enterprises. The Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Permit to construct a public sewer line for River Mesa, Section 4, from Crafton Tull on behalf of Manco Enterprises. The Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality Permit to construct a public sewer line for an On-Q convenience store from SMC Consulting Engineers on behalf of On-Q. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I'd like to pull Items F and G to discuss.
Yes, that would be, that would be fine. We'll pull Items F and G off Consent Docket, take them up in regular order. Now we're hearing the Consent Docket absent of Items F and G. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on these items, Ms. Burdine? We will take up Item G in regular order, so.
I pulled G for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Seeing no more discussion on the Consent Docket absent Items F and G, Madam Clerk, would you please call the vote?
Pillmore.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Now we'll take up Item F in regular order. The renewal of the existing interlocal governmental cooperation agreement with the Canadian County Sheriff's Office, providing use of the county jail for the term of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, at a rate of $57 per day per prisoner. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I just had a question. If we're contracting with Bethany and Village to bring their prisoners to us, why are we contracting to go to Canadian County?
This interlocal agreement with the sheriff's office is just in the event that we would have a problem in our facility and have to house a municipal prisoner in the county jail.
So we wouldn't be taking Village and Bethany and moving our guys there? Our guys would get first?
Correct. Yes, it's just in the event we have, we have an issue or we have something wrong with our facility, and we would need to house a prisoner there for a day or two.
That's what I needed, thank you.
Any other discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, would you please call the vote?
Pillmore.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Now we'll take up Item Number G. The enactment of a temporary moratorium on the enforcement of Chapter 82 of the City of Yukon Code of Ordinances dealing with peddlers and solicitors. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Burdine.
Stephanie Burdine, 515 Maple. I'm telling you, boy, this gets kind of interesting reading all these minutes and going over this. And when I got to that section, for those who don't know, there's a pest company named Moxie Pest Control that thinks our peddler and solicitation stuff is unconstitutional. They cited case study, they've hired a law firm out of Dallas who must specialize in this kind of stuff. I have a constitutional right, as does every other citizen, to not be disturbed in my home. Now, if we cowed to them, and I don't want us to, I don't want us to be in violation of any laws, I don't want to, you know, break the Constitution, but how is their right to bother people and spray poison everywhere? How does their right oversee my right when I'm, when I'm paying, I'm the one paying the taxes? And if they do this, who in this town is going to use a company that sued you? You don't use a company that sues you.
Yeah, Ms. Burdine, we're not repealing this ordinance. We're enacting.
Oh, I know you're not. All I want to say is I want to say, please do whatever you all have to do to stop this because it's ridiculous.
With our legal counsel, with Attorney Reinhardt, we are, and with the help of other municipal organizations that have encountered this, we're likely going to tweak our ordinance a bit to ensure that your rights are respected, every resident's rights are respected, and ensure that we meet the obligations to the Oklahoma Constitution, to the U.S. Constitution.
And I appreciate, and I don't think I'm the only citizen of Yukon that appreciates, that we do have this protection and not just any Tom, Dick, or Harpo can come knock on our door. So.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, and thank you for answering these questions, and I know the public appreciates you taking the time to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Burdine. Any other discussion on Item G? Seeing no more discussion, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-09, a resolution approving the City of Yukon, Oklahoma Budget for the fiscal year 25-26, establishing budget amendment authority and allowing for amendments to the proposed budget during the meeting as necessary. Make a motion similarly to approve this Resolution 2025-09, substituting wholesale Section 2 language with a change of the year from the 24-25 budget into the 25-26 budget resolution. And otherwise, the motion is to approve the resolution as it stands, with the exception of Section 2's wholesale change. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
I have a couple of items. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, just a couple of items that I'd like to bring up. One, we saw no concessions made to our general employees. We did not do anything about giving them any of their benefits back that we have taken away from them. And we fired people and let people, not fired, let them go and didn't rehire people, but yet we created a new position for a City Hall receptionist at $63,000 a year. I don't know too many receptionists that make $63,000 a year. I might come out of retirement next year and want to do that. My question is, I've been in City Hall all times of the day, and there's never a ton of people in there lost. We could put signage up that says City Manager's Office, City Clerk's Office, $250, $300, that would cost it the most, but to have somebody sit there to send lost people places when the utility billing is right there, that's included now in their new job description that they help lost people, when we're cutting positions and asking people to work more for less, and then we create a new position? I don't understand that.
That was the intention, was to be able to not, not eliminate. Mike, has anybody been let go from the city under the 12 positions that have been reduced?
We will end up with two people that are let go, and the rest have been through attrition, and we've been able to find some open positions elsewhere in the city to transfer people.
Do we believe that in the next, I mean, like, that was going to take effect right June the 30th? So do we believe in the next three, four weeks that whether through attrition or through opportunities that, that those two people will find a spot, or you doubt?
Likely not.
Okay.
And we still haven't fully staffed the library, but again, what I'm saying is.
Well, I think, I think on the library piece, and we've, we've talked about this with, with the head, the current head librarian and the ladies' library club, as well as the library board, we're looking, and we've requested this back in October of 2024, a workforce plan that it just explains simply how we staff the library for 64 hours a week and what the duties are of each staff member, part-time and full-time. That's, I'm all for full staffing, I just don't know what full staffing means, and that goes for every department. That's not, that's not specific to library. Every department ought to have a workforce plan that describes what people do each hour of the day through the week, you know, plus or minus, and you have to account for vacations, you have to account for sick time, you got to account for holidays, all that stuff. But we need a workforce plan, and we talked to, we talked to the library board about that in October of '24, and I still haven't seen it. The, the city employees, I think, are very well compensated. At the very back of the, of the council's budget book are the step grades for every position in the city, and these are assessed against benchmarks for other cities and municipalities. The, every year that someone is in a position, they move from one step to the other, and those step changes are give or take 2.5% to 3.5% changes from step to step for each year that they progress. Additionally, the city, and we had a really good meeting with OMRF, who explained the, the, the benefits plan, and I was impressed by, by the good benefits that we offer our, our city employees, both for retirement, the city contributes, and I'm sure everybody out there has probably seen some retirement plan at some point from some employer. This was the most generous one I've, I've ever seen, I've never received this at any place I've worked. The employer to this defined contribution plan, which many of our employees are in, the employer, the city, contributes 14.72%, and the employee contributes 5% of their pre-tax earnings. That's significant, it's almost 20% that's going into a retirement fund every year. It's good. It's a, and then our health benefits are good, our, our holiday hours are pretty good, and the performance of the OMRF fund has been, has been, has been very positive.
Back to my point, to hire somebody to sit in the lobby to direct lost people at $63,000 a year, plus give her a $2,500 computer to help lost people, seems to me like a waste of our money. The second thing is, we're going to spend, we've changed to $600,000 for a classroom at the gun range. There's no way that gun, that classroom can be built for $600,000, it will cost more, and you're going to come back at another time and ask for a budget amendment, and I don't know where that money's going to come from. We have a very nice classroom at the gun, at the police station, so to spend $600,000 on a classroom at the gun range, again, seems kind of overzealous there. So I just have a problem with those things in the budget.
I think our, our police training range, which today is, is a shooting range, absent training facilities, was used last year 280 days by our agency and other agencies that actually pay us to use that facility. Additionally, there's some very high-level training that's occurring regionally that we're hosting, and they're paying for this for breaching tactics. I agree with you that we need to get a good handle on the cost and understand the scope of it, and I don't want to spend more than $600,000. That's what has been budgeted here, and I will be disappointed if, if they come back. And I, and, you know, I don't think that we're going to amend the budget. We've allocated a good amount towards fire training facility and the police training facility here, and we're excited to be like a premier law enforcement organization and have premier public safety team members, over 40 team members at the fire department, over 70 team members at the police department. And just like, just being, just like being able to flush your toilet, just like being able to turn on your faucet, you should feel safe in your home, and you should feel like help is there if you are in need of help for your personal safety or for your health. And I think it's, it's an outstanding part that we should invest in, and our citizens expect it. I fully support the, the investment in police training, just like I fully supported the investment in fire training.
Amy McAllister, 14175 West Highway 66. First off, thank you for replacing the language. That was going to be part of mine as well. And to build on Ms. Selby's issue about the receptionist, there's also $9,000 in furniture that's been included. And to build on Ms. Selby's issue about the receptionist, there's also $9,000 in furniture that's been included, which seems a little bit excessive.
That I, I'm not as familiar with, Ms. McAllister, uh, but I, I assure you that before the money, while this may budget the money, before it's spent, we'll, we'll look at, what, what exactly will that be?
It's specifically a line item on Mr. Chris's memo, so it's easy to find.
I read it, and I had similar questions. I, it's not material enough for us to dig into, you know, at the moment, but we will, we will ask questions about that before the money is spent.
Okay. Um, the other, there were two other things that kind of stuck out to me, and I just need to be educated on them, I guess. The sinking fund, from what I understand, uh, that fund is used to receive money, and you set those funds aside, and that's how you make future loan payments or retire your debt. In the budget study session, like, two weeks ago, the budget was proposed at $777,000, which is the exact same as it was last year. But on the proposed budget tonight, it's now $292,000. Are we not going to pay our bills?
So, no, we definitely are, and it has to do with debt service for older bonds that were issued. Um, this is my elementary understanding. I, I actually asked, uh, on our sinking fund board, uh, a friend of mine, Chase Tippin, sits on that board, and I, he, he was new last year to that board, and I said, hey, fill me in on how this thing works, and him and I haven't fully caught up on it. But the good news about the sinking fund, which is kind of interesting, that percentage is declining because we haven't levied any new property taxes on you. Um, and this is, I think, uh, I think it's a philosophy on, of the council, to begin with, that we are in favor of not assessing property taxes to our citizens, increasing your, your tax burden. Does that make sense? And so the prop- when you, I see my property taxes going up. When you see those, uh, please don't curse the Yukon City Council. Maybe direct it towards other good things that we all voted on, right? Uh, for or against, but they passed. The schools, the VOTEC, and the county primarily, and county is a few different pieces. Uh, but the bottom line is, that sinking fund is bleeding down, and in, in our term in office, it will go away. So essentially, when you look at your property tax statement, there will be no piece of it that is attributable to the City of Yukon. Maybe that's a shock to some people listening. I think it's a good thing.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Very good. Thank you. Okay, the other question I had was, during the budget study session, the sales tax capital improvement plan, which I know I talked about at the last meeting, uh, was proposed at 11 million, 11.9 million. So with this proposed budget, it's now 19.7 million plus a little extra change. So that seems to be a really big increase, 7.8 million. So what would, what would be inside that increase?
The only changes to the capital budget were enumerated in Mr. Chris's memo, um, which I do have in my stack here somewhere.
Boy, they do not total up to 7.8 million.
So I think that there.
So maybe my 11.9 was wrong.
There has to be some math that's off, and I'd be happy to visit with, with, uh, the city manager and Mr. Chris, and you're certainly welcome to join us to understand that a little bit more. The only, the only amendments, this is my, my, uh, spreadsheet of the amendments. The only amendments were those that were highlighted, and they were, um, they don't, they, they're not, they're definitely not a, whatever that difference was, eight or nine million dollars.
Yeah, so I totaled it up, 1.892 million, uh, for the capital improvement fund.
Those are the only changes from the meeting that we had.
Okay, sounds good. I must have had the beginning number wrong.
Well, I, I'd like to get to the bottom of that as well.
Well, you might just go back and, maybe go back and look at your presentation from the budgets session and just see what that number was, so, okay.
Great, great point. Thank you so much, Ms. McAllister.
Mike Burris, 300 East Platte Drive. I looked on the, uh, agenda, and what it said was that Mr. Castro had requested an additional $100,000 going into legislative.
That was, that was my request, Mr. Burris, and it's, it's for something that we covered in executive session. I'm not able to comment on that item.
And I understand, but I feel like that that, in addition to what I read in the paper, has made me feel like councilperson Selby is attempting to intimidate me and other Yukon citizens into not addressing the budget. The Yukon budget's a public concern, and the comments that I gave you on her post, um, are part of my request, uh, for harassment investigation, but her comments also pertain to the budget. Her post says in parts, "The training I receive will be top level. The conferences I take are filled with education and hard work. Have you ever taken the time to see what, why I serve on boards and committees unlike my counterparts on the council?" Ms. Selby is months away from being termed out as a councilperson in Yukon. Yukon tax money should not be budgeted or spent to enhance someone's resume for their entertainment or in, uh, the last few months of their service. Ms. Selby's claims, her comm- or, Ms. Selby claims her comments were referred to la- uh, referred to last week's Women in Municipal Government Conference. I think I'm being generous by saying there appeared to be little or no training at the Women in Municipal Government Conference.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would contend with that, Mr. Burris. Um, while I've disagreed with Councilmember Selby on occasion, related to, uh, some of these organizations and the cost-benefit analysis for our city to participate in them, I would disagree that there's no training going on. There is training going on. The question is one of value, I believe, and we, and I fully support the budgeted amounts that we have placed in this budget for all council members to participate in these or other organizations. And as the, as the person that holds the motion that's been seconded, those amounts are in my motion. I fully support those. And so we, we do need to keep our discussion here while we have received your, your comments. Need to keep our discussion not to Ms. Selby's comments, uh, here or there, but we need to keep them to the budgeted amounts, in agreement or disagreement with those budgeted amounts or comments around those.
And while I agree with your comments, and I'll, and I'll, uh, ask that my comments be made a part of the record.
Yes, sir.
I, I do also, at this point, want to say, because this is relevant to it, I see what you're saying about that there is some value to that conference. However, however, if someone was to post on Facebook at 9:36, and then not 10:44, and then again at 10:45, then at 10:46, then at 12:50, then at 1:16, then at 1:16 again, then at 2:01, then at 2:50. And I can go on for a while if you want me to, but I bet you don't want me to.
Well, I think it's out, out, Mr. Burris, I, I appreciate your comment here, but I think it's outside the scope of our budget discussion. Our budget discussion, I mean, the beauty of our, our, the world, or the country we live in is that everyone can post or speak or go to the corner with a, even with probably, uh, Roger might chime in of whether I'm allowed with a megaphone or, but certainly unamplified, I could go to the street corner as a town crier. But that's outside the scope of this discussion, um, what time someone posts on Facebook. The discussion we have to have is, it's fine to agree or disagree with budgeted line items. That's what we're at the heart of right here.
There is $100,000, or there is a legislative budget, and I, I, I'm, I'm sitting down, but there is a legislative budget that funds, um, people going to events.
Yes, absolutely.
That legislative budget is for a certain amount, and if that person is not going to attend them, instead of spend all their time on Facebook, I would prefer that they not go.
I, I believe that all the councilpersons and every councilperson has participated in training, um, uh, namely the OML, uh, New Officials Institute training, among others.
I went with you.
But all, all councilmembers have attended one or more trainings, and I do believe that, that our council, all five members, work harder than any, I would put them up against any council.
And, and I don't know about that. I, I can't tell you about.
Yeah, fair enough, but we may disagree on certain items, but there's no doubt in my mind that, that every councilmember works hard and studies hard and trains hard.
And I appreciate what you're saying, however, it's my money that's going toward funding this government.
I understand. Yeah, we can disagree with the, the amount spent. And, and I, I certainly brought it up two meetings ago around our funding of two organizations. And those two organizations, we as a, as a council, decided to continue funding them. They're in the budget, and they are part of my motion this evening. Thank you, Mr. Burris.
Susan Heggie, 720 Shephto Avenue. I would just like to reiterate, uh, what Ms. Selby said. I, I hear you saying, you know, we're not going to talk about the library position, but I've been trying for a year to get them to tell me what exact amount of staffing is needed. I think I have the same question. What exact amount of staffing is needed to direct people to Yukon City offices? Is it a $63,000 receptionist? Uh, that seems excessive to me, but I might want to apply.
Fair enough. Our, Ms. Heggie, our new, uh, acting city manager will have to take that up because it'll be under his watch. And we do not, while we budget and appropriate dollars, we do not conduct, as the city council, we do not conduct hiring and firing or personnel decisions. It's actually, uh, prohibited by our charter for the council to get involved with that. So while we may be budgeting the dollars, the acting city manager will have to decide.
So who requested the new receptionist?
We've heard from several, from several citizens that what their experience going into city hall is one of, uh, entering a rotunda with minimal direction, minimal signage, and this person is not just going to be directing people. There are other tasks that could be assigned because it'll be an administrative person that has skills, right? It's not just sit there and wait for somebody to walk in.
Okay, well, that didn't really answer my question. My question is, who requested it and put it on the budget?
Uh, I rolled up this list of 15 changes from all the councilmembers and put them on the budget, changes. Communicated them to the city manager, and then Mr. Chris and Mr. Beal, uh, put them into the budget.
Okay, so somebody made a list, and you made it to. So who on the list?
I don't have the, I don't have the persons that requested each item on this at the moment.
At the, um, I'm going back to the budget study. How much is our debt service for the city? I thought I heard the number 4 million, but I don't know where I got that number from.
I don't have that right in front of me.
And I want to know if I'm wrong about that number.
Yeah. I can t- I can tell you some other general things from memory on debt service, but, or on, on the.
I thought our debt service amount was 4 million, and I know we haven't had a bond issued since, what, 2020? Was it 2020 or last one?
Yeah, I think the last one was done near the end of '19 or beginning of '20.
Okay, so what you're saying is that by the end of this term, by the end of your term then, or end of next year?
No, those, so, uh, Ms. Heggie, those bonds that were done prior to my time, in '17, '18.
Right.
I think it was.
There were several in '17, several in '18.
There were about four of them. They're, they're revenue bonds, so they pledge the future revenues of the city, as in the sales tax, so they're not assessed to your property taxes.
I'm not asking about that.
Yeah, but you were saying, are they going to burn off, or are they going to be gone?
Right, are they going to be gone?
They're not. They, they span out to 2032, if, if my memory serves me right.
That's what I wanted to know, because the implication you gave was that they would be gone, and we wouldn't be paying on anything.
No, no, not those bonds.
Okay, but that's the understanding I got from what you said.
No.
So.
The, what I was.
I was confused, obviously.
No problem. What I was specifically referring to, um, was the sinking fund that was br- brought up earlier, and that is connected to property taxes.
Okay, and the sinking fund is used to pay?
Uh, it, it was connected to a bond that, that voters and residents voted on, uh, associated with a property tax increase. I don't know the year that that occurred in. But what I'm saying is, I think this time last year, I asked for a number, it was like, for every $100,000 of property value, it was give or take $35 of property tax. It's pea- the, the bottom line is, it's peanuts, and it's burning off. So your property tax burden attributable to the City of Yukon is close, is close to and approaching zero.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Um, not really, but.
What doesn't make sense about that, because I think it's important to cover.
It's almost like I'm comparing apples to oranges, so the, the sinking fund.
Is associated with property tax.
Right, is associated with property tax. So it pays what?
It does pay a bond. I don't know the name of that bond or what year that bond was done.
Okay.
They typically don't have fund names.
So that sinking fund is only for that particular bond?
That's correct.
Okay, so the other bonds we have are still outstanding?
There are, I believe, I'm doing this from memory, so don't quote me on it. Four or five other bonds, and they span, I think it, I can't remember, it's 15, 16, 17, 18, or it, it, there was one done.
There are several.
Yeah.
There are several.
But they span out to 2032, and those are, those bonds, what pays those bonds is a pledge of revenues to the city.
So how much is outstanding on that? Is that the $4 million debt service we've got?
No, there, there's a bigger, it's a bigger number.
Bigger number.
I, I need to go and look at our, um, audit. We're about to get, I, I could go and look at the, the audit from last year.
Um, and how much are, assuming this budget is passed in total, like it's presented, how much of our reserve funds will be remaining after that?
Give or take, uh, 10, 11 million off the top of my head.
Okay, that seems odd, because at the budget study, we talked about, you talked about.
When you say, when you say reserve funds, are you talking about unallocated?
Unencumbered, and for those of you who aren't accounting people, uncommitted funds.
Yeah, give or take.
Money that's not already pledged to pay some, something current or in the future.
Give or take 10 million, 11 million.
Okay, well, that doesn't seem to jive with the numbers that were talked about at the study.
Well, the, the city manager, you were there for the, for the budget discussion. He talked about, this time last year, that those un- unencumbered or unallocated funds were give or take 15 million, right?
Right.
And he said that we're going to use, utilize five or so million beyond our, our estimated incoming revenues in the next fiscal year for those capital expenditures, everything from, uh.
And then another 1 million to, to shore up the, the general fund. It was about 800, $900,000, which that amount has decreased on your current proposal. Because it was 900,000, and now it's, mm, I don't have that number in front of me.
Yeah.
It is now, uh... Amy, do you remember what that number is? I don't remember either.
Yeah. But you're cor- you're correct in identifying what the city manager explained, that we are investing in some long-term assets of the city. Everything from replacing a 19, I forget the name of the piece of equipment, Arnold, a 1995 bucket truck, um, all the way up to doing some road construction or wastewater treatment work. All of those investments, what are we doing fundamentally, in a simple way? We're taking dollars from a bank account that have been sitting in a bank account. And before, a year ago, those dollars were not earning interest. Thankfully, we've earned, give or take, about a million dollars of interest on those funds in the last 12 months. We're taking some of those dollars, and we're putting them to work for Yukon citizens because you shouldn't have to drive on broken roads, you should be able to flush your toilet. Our, our team members should be able to work in a city hall that has a boiler that's not past its serviceable life. Uh, our team members in Public Works should be able to use a bucket truck, have the right equipment to do their jobs safely, so we don't have an accident or have a workers' comp claim, or someone gets injured. Essentially, we're spending some of those dollars that were set aside. We're spending them not on wasteful things. We're spending them on things within the city that are deeply needed. Assets that are beyond their service, serviceable life, and buildings that could be without heat because the boiler is decades, decades old.
I don't, I don't think anybody disputes that any of the capital improvements that are proposed are wasteful, spend-thrift, or any of the other things, or that they're not needed.
Yes.
I don't think anyone disagrees with that.
Good.
I just think that in our poor economic state that our city is in.
Why do you think we're in a poor economic state?
Because I think that when you have a city that has $9 million in reserves, and that's all that'll be left, and you've got a budget of $87 million, I think, I personally think that.
We don't have a budget of $87 million.
Well, and if you have a, well, I'm looking at your total budget down here.
That's a, that's a, a bad math number, because it, it double counts, it double counts some things in there.
Okay, well, then why wasn't that corrected, so we would know what we're talking about? Regardless, regardless, I think it's irresponsible, okay? One other question. Where on here is the general reserve fund? Is it under a particular name or something?
You're, uh, are you talking about the, the fund for general reserves?
I'm talking about, it's called a general reserve fund, and the only reason I know that is because I looked at the audit from 2023 that talks about the .25 cents of the, of the four cent sales tax.
Fund 79.
That is supposed to go to the general reserve fund, and I'm trying to figure out where that is.
Fund 79 is called the Yukon Reserve Support Fund, if that's what you're referring to.
I don't know. That's my question to you. Is that the general reserve fund?
I believe so. Yeah, here's the.
Is that it?
It's a, yes.
Mr. Castro.
Yes, that's it.
Okay.
Fund 79.
So does that meet the percentage requirement that that, uh, sales tax was voted to?
Yes, it does.
Okay, for this year?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you so much, Ms. Heggie.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other discussions? Seeing no more discussions, Madam Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Hillmore?
Yes.
Selby?
No.
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
There's no new business, Mr. Mayor, either?
Oh, thank you, I have to get my pa- I, I started looking through lots of other papers, so let me get my proper paper going. At this time, we'll open up the floor for each, uh, councilperson and say a few words in closing. This item is reserved for announcements, recognitions, et cetera, it's not intended for the conduct of city business by members of the public body. Councilmember Selby.
I would like to just thank, uh, Mr. Castro for the time that you spent with us and the progress that you made, and that you will be deeply missed.
Thank you.
Councilmember Zimmerman.
Nothing new tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Shriver.
I'd also like to thank Mr. Castro first time, also please keep Mustang and Norman out southeast of us, your thoughts, even if, from my understanding, they got some pretty good damage out there, so keep our neighbors in mind.
City Manager Castro, would you like to add anything?
Uh, Mayor, thank you, uh, thank you, council, for your support and for hiring me as the city manager all those, all those months ago. Um, I've enjoyed council support, I appreciate, uh, our discussions, I appreciate your support, um, from the DIES, and, uh, want nothing but good things for the city, I've got a lot of confidence in Jeff and, and wish him good luck going forward, and hope to hear good things about Yukon in the future. Thank you all for your, uh, for your efforts.
Thank you, sir. Some upcoming special events in Yukon, beginning this Thursday, June fifth, mystery dates will be performing, begins at seven PM, Chisholm Trail Park in the large gazebo. Uh, family-friendly music, hot dogs, hamburgers, and concession items are available for purchase. All the performance dates can be found at yukonok.gov/fun. Friday fun days begin Friday, June sixth with Touch a Truck. Every Friday at ten AM, uh, this will occur. This first one is at Chisholm Trail Park in the Oklahoma parking lot. Price is free, it's fun for all the kids, come on out and touch a truck. Freedom Fest, uh, July third and fourth, the activities on the third begin at five PM in Chisholm Trail Park. Activities on the fourth begin at seven-thirty AM in City Park. Uh, free for most activities, fireworks, of course, concerts, kids' activities and games, youth triathlon, car show, one of my favorites, the hot dog eating contest, children's parade, free swimming, free ice cream and watermelon, cornhole tournament, and food trucks. See yukonok.gov/fun. I'd like to give a shout-out to our Yukon Public Schools, which are putting on some really good things this summer. Um, in particular, my daughters, I dropped them off this morning for a, uh, little girl's basketball camp. Um, I think nine-to-twelve-year-olds, I believe, don't quote me on that, uh, and they just had a blast. I think they, they were so worn out, but they said that they're gonna put their energy into it, uh, tomorrow as well. Um, and I would like to echo the sentiment of all councilmembers. We thank, uh, Mike Castro for his service to the city, we've done some amazing things in the last year together, and, uh, we really appreciate you and Lisa coming to our community, you're involved in so many things, and we wish you the best in all your future endeavors. With that, this meeting is adjourned.